...of May 2nd, 2022, to order, and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
I'm here.
Almas.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda, there has been an amendment also.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you please state your name, and then write your name and address for the clerk, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Kelly Smith, and I am a candidate for the new 101st District Michigan House of Representatives, making my rounds, so I'm here tonight to just give you a little bit of backstory of who I am. I am the former managing director at the Nuego County Road Commission, where I was employed for 35 years. In the last 20 of those years, as their managing director. Upon retiring there in February of 2020, the members of the community, and actually our current house rep, who is Scott Van Single down there and has termed out, approached me about running for the open seat. That was before the redistricting actually happened, but after some thought and some discussions with my wife Pamela, she's also a 25-year public servant at the county of Nuego through the court system, we decided this was an excellent opportunity for us to pay back the community for the public service we've been allowed to have. So with that being said, I filed in the old district for us, which would be the 100th, back a year ago last March, so it's been about 13 months ago I filed. During this time, I've been out working, and before the redistricting happened, obviously, I stayed a little close to home. We were fairly confident that the new district was going to include Nuego, where I live, and Lake County. So worked there mostly until the district's lines were drawn, which includes all of Nuego, part of Lake, part of Wexford, four townships in Mason, and two townships in Oceana, 53 townships in all. I believe I've been to 40 of those 53, and about seven or eight of the cities and villages to their council or chamber meetings and such. I spent a tremendous amount of time up here getting to know the district, being that I'm from Nuego County and grew up there, lived there my whole life. It's time for me to get out, and if I'm looking to represent the district, I need to get out and experience it and meet those that I intend to serve, so that's what I've been doing. I've given you a couple handouts there that gives a little bit of background of who I am. And I have a Facebook page, very active, a website, my cellphone is on that document, feel free to reach out at any time. I won't go into a whole lot of detail, because I'm sure you have a lot to go on in your meeting tonight, but I'm going to stick around to the end, so if you'd like to get with me after the meeting, I'd appreciate it, so thank you for your time.
My name is Philip Painter. I'm a member of the neighborhood around Cooley School, and I wanted to voice my opposition to any kind of zoning changes that would allow apartments in our neighborhood.
Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on April 18th.
I'd make a motion to approve a consent agenda as amended to correct typographical errors.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And that takes us to some communications this evening, Sandy.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade on May 30th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade on May 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on June 18th, 2022, for a wedding reception.
I'd make a motion to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on June 18th, 2022, for a wedding reception.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries. And that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item this evening are bids and a recommendation regarding the purchase of a portable generator. This is a unit for the wastewater collection system that the city maintains. We do have an appropriation of $60,000 for the purchase of a portable generator to replace a unit that's 35 years old. Bids were received, and the recommendation this evening is to go with Leetie or Leet generators for an amount of $57,571. They are the lowest bidder. Additionally, we're looking to authorize an amount of $2,380 to cover startup and training offered by the company that would bring the total to $59,951. Still a number significantly under the other bids that were received, and funds are available in our water and sewer fund accordingly.
Are shipping expenses included in that total?
I don't know the answer to that.
The bid indicated FOB Cadillac, so it should be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It must be a really nice generator for $60,000. How many, I mean, what is it used for? Backup generator, or?
Out at the treatment plant, you don't want that to fail.
If you could please come up.
Excuse me, Jeff.
The other bids, as you could see, were in the $70,000-plus range.
Hello, yes, it's used for all of our smaller lift stations that do not have a permanent generator with them. Our larger lift stations all have a permanently mounted generator at them. This is for our mid-size and our small lift stations that just do not have generators next to them, so.
How many lift stations does it?
We have 11 that would power, can power.
People didn't know that.
Right, so.
What, and the other one's 35 years old, but still.
Yep, the other one, the other one was a actual generator that came from one of our lake lease, lake leisure or lease and lift station that they actually retrofitted to be a portable generator. So it's actually, we've had it for 35 years as a portable generator, but it's actually older than that.
What are we going to do with it, the old one? Auction it?
Yeah. Anybody want, it runs great, but it's 35 years old, you just don't know when it's not going to run great.
It's, yeah, it's okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody make a motion yet?
No.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of a portable generator to Leet or Leetie generators in the amount of $57,571, and to approve the startup and training offered by the company for an additional amount of $2,380 for a total cost of $59,951.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next recommendation is regarding the replacement of a 48-inch screw pump. Again, it's another wastewater treatment facility system device. The city did bid this item out. Two bids were received with the recommendation going to the lowest bidder in an amount of $287,000 to the Franklin Holdwerda Company. This pump will replace the current unit, which is no longer repairable. And again, our utilities director is here if you have any technical questions regarding the device.
Tell me what a screw pump does, Jeff. Just idle curiosity.
Yes, a screw pump is actually an early form of a pump that can move different volumes of water. So it can either move a low volume of water or a high volume, it depends how much water's in the base of the screw pump. And it actually is a screw that goes in a channel, and the water just moves up. What happened to the old one was the bottom bearing shifted, and the actual screw went and rubbed against the cement, making it smaller than it needs to be, so when we put it back in line, it will still pump water, but it's supposed to be a 4.5 million gallon pump. It'll pump about 1 and 1/2 to 2 million gallons on a good day, and then we just fall behind with it. So we do have two others at the front of the plant, but we need the third one for just redundancy, so.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I'll make a motion to award the project, wait a second, where am I? Yes, the project to remove and replace a 48-inch screw pump to Franklin Holdwerda Company in the amount of $287,000.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item under the manager's report is a recommendation essentially regarding a change order for the roof maintenance project happening here at City Hall. Just for memory, back in February of 2022, Cocalon Roofing was awarded the contract in the amount of $140,500. And in accordance with the attached communication to the communication, due to issues outside of the company's control, they are requesting an additional sum of $4,686, and it is our recommendation to adjust that agreement to a total of $145,186. Funds are available for the project within our general fund currently.
Does anybody know what roof maintenance consists of, Owen? Anybody?
Yeah, so there's some flashing repair around, there's an enclosure for our rooftop units that's brick that sticks up out of the roof, so there's some work being done around there. And then the roof is still in good enough shape where they're going to spray on a new layer of whatever the materials are. So if we had to strip everything out and completely redo it, it'd be probably double or three times the cost. But because it was still in okay condition, they can spray on a new layer of the material, and.
How long has this building been here? 80s? Early 80s?
70s. 70s, yeah.
70s, okay. I've seen the leaks in Sandy's office, it's in need of some repair.
There's a couple along that wall, and one out here, so.
It's time.
Yep.
So in the contractor's letter, he had said something about the fact that we had contracted for a third party to perform a roof moisture scan. We're still going to go ahead and move forward with that, aren't we?
Well, he was saying that based on the limited amount of leaks that we've had, he would be comfortable not doing that, and having the company apparently comes and does a little bit of analysis, the actual materials.
Well, I'm just wondering if that was scanning the rust of the roof that wasn't being replaced.
It would be, so, you know, technically, I guess this proposal would have taken that out, just to save on the amount of costs. If we're more comfortable leaving that in, we could certainly leave that in and do it in accordance with the contractor's recommendations. That's a $4,000 cost, so.
So there would be an additional $4,000 to the amount that was added.
Right, so then we would need to be $149,186.
Did the people doing the roof recommend it highly?
He recommended, when he, in the letter, I think even, basically saying that we could to perform a roof moisture scan, taking into account the condition of the existing roof, and since any roof leakage has been minimal over the years, this scan could be eliminated from the contract cost to possibly help offset some of the added costs. The scan could just be performed by the manufacturer, as we did on the Cadillac Career Tech Center that was done last year prior to insulation. So that was what I was thinking, the actual manufacturer of the spray material comes on site to evaluate, to make sure that they can spray it on with no issues. And they perform kind of a little less thorough scan, but the contractor was comfortable in talking with him and allowing them to do that similar to, they just did the project at the CTC.
Well, I just wanted to think about that, because if it was in the.
That's a good question.
If it was in the original proposal, they thought that it was important enough to put it in there, so, you know, are we, with the age of the roof, are we letting something go for, you know, a $4,000 cost that could cost us more down the road by not doing the scan now?
Yeah, and he didn't think so, but I certainly don't want to be, you know, penny wise pound foolish by any means, so.
If they do the scan, if the manufacturer does the scan when they go to spray, they could recommend us to do a more thorough scan if they found a problem.
Certainly.
And then you just come back to us and say, let's do it.
Yeah, yeah, and I would communicate that very clearly to Cocalon Roofing as well.
Make sure they.
Great question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, me too, I'm thinking.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll be right in touch with them and talking to them as they're here and doing that, and making sure that we're, you know, 100% good with that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the contract with Cocalon Roofing Company for roof maintenance of the Cadillac Municipal Complex, so that it is increased to $145,186.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item is the item that we added this evening. It's a recommendation regarding the rental of a mechanical street sweeper, and as the communication left for you at your seats identifies, the city is looking at renting a third street sweeper for one month this spring. This sweeper will help us in getting heavier and larger debris off of our roadways, gutters and paths better than the street sweepers that the city currently owns. The street sweepers that the city currently owns use air to move debris around. This one is just a mechanical type device that essentially acts as like a very large broom and dustpan type system. So it works differently than the devices that we have. We don't believe that owning a device like this, at least at this point, is necessary with the option to rent one for a period of time that we think would be good enough. This would be a good opportunity for us, yet the spring to buy a device like this is $300,000 plus. To rent one is $10,750, and so the value proposition is a lot stronger to rent one. To obtain this device, as the communication speaks to, we would need to utilize a company called Bell Equipment. Therefore, the recommendation this evening would be to waive competitive bidding and then authorize a one-month rental of a mechanical street sweeper from Bell Equipment in the amount of $10,750. We do have funds available in our stores and garage fund for this acquisition.
Well, I certainly think that it gives our staff an opportunity to get things cleaned up sooner in the early or late, as it is now, spring cleanup. Is Ken's staff willing to run six or seven days a week so we can use it to its full potential during that time?
Yes, we're confident in six.
Okay.
We have five covered for sure, obviously. And it would just need to be offering some overtime, which the DPW guys get less of in the summer. So we didn't want to kind of throw it out before we had the approval to move forward, but five covered for sure. Confident with six, maybe every now and then we can get it at seven.
When do you think it's going to be here if we approve it?
Yeah, it's about three weeks out.
They're going to bring it up?
To, what's that?
They'll bring it up?
We may have to go get it.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's within, it's probably about in the Grand Rapids area, so. And one thing I didn't mention was there's also some cost recovery with it, because anytime we would sweep on the major route, the trunk line, the state would pay for that. It's about 100 bucks an hour that we bill out, so. And then the other costs, our own street funds, pay rent at state rates, and that's the use of the Act 51. So the state will pay for a portion of it through the, when we sweep on the major trunk line routes.
I have a question, just in general.
Yeah.
Do we use this, our sweepers, do we use it on alleyways that are paved? Or do we just do the main roads?
That's a good question. I don't think that we sweep the hard alleys.
I don't think we sweep.
Yeah, because I think we typically focus on the gutters, because that's where things typically wash. The alleys should be crowned in such a way that stuff would run more off of them than. Sometimes, as part of the maintenance, we would maybe brush, because there's some gravel at times that run onto those, that would be the big thing. And if there are trouble spots, we could brush it just back off of the alleyway, so.
Do we have a trailer bringing up to bring it up?
We drive it, it's just on a chassis, a big truck chassis.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I was thinking eight miles an hour would be a long.
No, you can disengage that and.
Oh, you're sure? You're sure now?
You're not going to sweep the 131 all the way up?
131 all the way up.
Yes. We're not relying on my truck expertise.
We could probably charge a lot if we did.
Yeah, that's true.
Three weeks from now, we should have our last snowstorm.
Then we could do it, right?
But you probably noticed, I mean, those first spring rains, everything, you clean them, and then everything just washes right back down.
I've seen the street sweepers have been through, but Chestnut Street's nasty again, and.
Yep, some of those two and three times already, and the gutter pans are full, so.
Okay.
So first, we have to make a motion to waive competitive bidding, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding rental of a mechanical street sweeper.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion to authorize a one, oh no, to authorize, I'm trying to think of this, to authorize. I'm thinking that that's where it is, to authorize a one-month rental of a mechanical street sweeper from Bell Equipment in the amount of $10,750.
Second.
Councilmember Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
What happens when you don't have it out of time to read through?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next three items are all related to our annual budgeting process, as we're at the tail end of that. The first request is to set the public hearing to adjust water rates in the city of Cadillac for May 16th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 42-201 and 42-202 (3) of Chapter 42 of the city code to adjust water rates in the city of Cadillac, and to set a public hearing for May 16th, 2022.
And then is our rate presentation going to be during that?
Ben?
Yes.
Support.
And it hasn't changed since the last presentation, so.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
No.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The next item is the same as the last one, except this is regarding the sewer rates. And just again, for the public record, the council and public had two rate presentations on this, and you'll have a third. There's been no changes at all since it was originally introduced.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 42-374 of Chapter 42 of the city code to adjust sewer rates in the city of Cadillac and set a public hearing for May 16th, 2022.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
No.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The last sort of quasi-related item is to set the public hearing for May 16th, 2022, establishing the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2023.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance establishing General Appropriations Act for the fiscal year 2023, and set a public hearing for May 16th, 2022.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries. Excuse me.
Nope, no problem, and thank you again, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next two items are also somewhat related. They are regarding the acceptance of two new local streets, both of which are within the Terry D Development area. The first one is a request to consider the resolution for the addition to the local street system called Terry D Boulevard.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution for addition to local street system, Terry D Boulevard.
Support.
Councilmember Almas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
And the last item under this section of our agenda this evening is just like the one before, and this one is to consider the adoption of a new street to the local street system in the Terry D project area called Carla Lane.
Should I be voting on this? I don't think there's any.
No, you're not receiving any fiduciary or other benefits, so.
How do you know it's not the other Carla?
It is the other Carla.
It could be the other Carla, or the other Carla's.
Right.
It's a great name for. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for addition to local street system, Carla Lane.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Almas.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have in our packet, yes, sir.
No, I was about the downtown development authority minutes.
Okay, okay, so this evening, in our packets, we do have the minutes from the Downtown Development Authority for their last meeting, and you have something on that?
Yeah, I just want to know, Brian mentioned last time, the banners, I suppose, if you want to call them that, the lamppost banners, I know that they brought it up in their March meeting. And they were looking at artwork, they were looking at numerous things, and I thought your idea. A few weeks ago was fine, so this is the right time to bring it up. I mean, you know, I don't know how you want to get that.
With the DDA?
Yeah, I don't know how you want to get that to them, but in March, they were dealing with that just a short while ago, so.
I'll run with that, thank you.
This opportunity, yeah.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment, and everything is the same as the first.
Pastor Troy Baxter, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you again this evening in reference to protecting the current zoning that surrounds the Cooley School campus. We've continued to be busy developing relationships with the neighbors, and the 35 signatures that I presented last meeting were still in opposition to any zoning change. And 32 signatures were supporting Cornerstone Ministries' proposal for the redevelopment of Cooley School. And we've had council that have encouraged us to not only reach out to this board, but also reach out to the Planning Commission, and so we intend to do that. And we intend to file through with a formal neighborhood alliance. There's some strong feelings in the neighborhood. There's some strong feelings in the neighborhood that they do not want apartments there. Having said that, looking into that neighborhood, I'm not in that neighborhood yet, but I do desire to be part of that neighborhood. And so we do feel like that we have support of that and want to do more of what we've done through the city, through the mentoring of skilled trades program, this ministry of Cornerstone Church, two of the historic buildings here on the board, the Cobb's Mitchell Building, we've worked there, we worked at the Old City Hall, we worked at the Mitchell Bentley Plant that's now being converted to Cadillac National Storage for Restoration. We worked significantly at Long Road Distillery, beautification and protecting those buildings that are important to the heritage of the, of the city. So it's our approach that, doing what our proposal presented for the Cooley School Campus would protect the neighborhood. It's a real positive embrace of the neighborhood park, church, and daycare, which, which we have, all but one individual has supported that, and they now have a for-sale sign in front of their house. So we're just continuing to move forward and wanting to embrace things from a positive standpoint and everything we can to be successful, continue to build relationships in the community as we move forward. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public comments down and move to good of the order.
Go ahead, let's start at your side.
You want me to go?
Sure.
Okay. I have two thank yous I'd like to hand out. I'll try to be brief. I'd like to thank the people of Cadillac who take pride in their yards and homes, take the time to work, to take care of those yards and make Cadillac a beautiful place to live. Number two is a thank you to that big guy over there, Adam Ojepka, who took the time out of his busy schedule to come by my house to discuss the ongoing blight problem in Cadillac. We also visited one taxpayer who is battling a bright blight problem next door to their place. I'd like to think Adam now has a better perspective of the blight problem in town. I'm sure the person you visited was very thankful, I am showing your concern. As we spoke, I'd like to reiterate, I think we need stricter enforcement, we need a more aggressive approach to the solution to this problem, and it is a problem. We need to give the people in charge more authority to deal with the people who thinks it's okay to have junk in their yard. Maybe we need a judge that will prosecute blight houses if necessary. Maybe we need to find landlords for blight rentals. Something has to be done. It's time to make an effort to halt this problem because if you don't face it and do something about it, it's only gonna get worse. I, myself, in the eighties, ended up in court in front of Chuck Corwin with a complaint because the city wouldn't go near it. And they said, well, what can I do? Well, you take it to court. So I did. I took my neighbor to court with the pictures. And of course, all the junk in his yard was valuable and worth hundreds of dollars, even though the car had sat on blocks for two years. And he got a warning and cleaned up part of it. I guess everybody was happy. But I get, one of the things I get the most complaints of, I don't know if you do, but is the blight in town, people who don't take care of their property. I mean, it's a beautiful town, I mean, most of my neighbors are fantastic. Most of the people in this town are great, that's why I'm here, like you. Okay, that's it, thank you.
So I'd like to do a shout out to Up North Arts. They're one of the folks that are at the Quonset Hut, the Old Navy Reserve place. And this past Saturday, they did an open house and sort of spring festival, and they had all kinds of events and activities for families and kids and seniors and everybody. And people got to do, participate in art, there was an art exhibit. And I would just like to encourage folks to go check out Up North Arts. And they offer classes, they offer, there's a shop, and the artists are wonderful. And so be sure to check that out this summer and get your picture taken by the mural of the wings on the, on the wall there, so.
They have art for sale in there?
They have art for sale, yeah.
Thank you.
Marcus, do you have anything for good of the order?
I do that.
Okay. I, I would just like to take a moment to mention the great loss that the community, the city of Cadillac and the, and the outlying community, the great loss that we felt this weekend with the passing of Pat Goggan. He was larger and, larger than life, and he leaves quite a legacy. And I know that there's many times that I walked into the lobby here at the city and he was here, you know, speaking with the gals behind the desk, and everybody in the municipal complex could hear him. And the city, I think all of us would say, Pat was always very supportive of the city in general, and he did whatever he could, whatever he saw needed to be done. And he, he strove every day to make a difference. And I'm gonna miss him, and I know that all of you probably will too. His memorial service is going to be on Friday. Thursday night is the visitation at Peterson's Funeral Home, and his service is at 11 p.m. or 11 a.m. on Friday at St. Anne's Catholic Church. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.